First, alderman is roll call.
Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Hedley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Okay. Next, I mean, invitation led by Pastor Darryl Jones of Crossers Church. All by pledge allegiance to God.
Just for tonight. And we are, uh, you're, you're just so good to us. We're grateful tonight. And we're so undeserved. You've loved us in ways that we're not even aware of. So often, we, uh, when things are good, we take credit for it. When things are bad, we want to blame you for it. So we just wanted to acknowledge who you are. And that you are the God of this world, God of this universe. Great. Great for the business at hand tonight. That's going to be transacted during our leaders. As they, they intercede on behalf of our community. And all of us remember. They don't represent themselves alone. They represent a portion of our population. And they're trusted with the goal of interceding on behalf of the good of all. So as they do that tonight, they put stamps for group one things. If they approve agendas, resolutions and ordinances, God, that make decisions for not just the near future, but for our future as in the next ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. To make decisions for future generations, God, it's great. The weight of that would weigh on them. But also that, uh, that it would be a good responsibility for them to think, think through and to think about. Great for our community, for illnesses and hardships. And for, for those that struggle in various ways. For every them. We as a community might come together and intercede on behalf of this one. What great all of the children.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, united in our own individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, I was approval of agenda.
No changes, mayor.
Alright. Seeing no proaction, we'll move on to citizens' participation. Uh, we ask the citizens who wish to address the board, uh, please come forward to the podium and microphone and give your, uh, name and address for the record. Have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening?
Chuck Johnston, six eleven Cross Creek Drive, Green Valley. Um, I had a question as much as comment. Um, was the firm that took on this, um, program where they, um, put out to, um, bid? Was their, um, participation is put out for bid?
Which one are you talking, like for the?
The firm is presenting the proposal for the complex. Well, I'd like to do a sunshine request for a copy of the, um, what, RFP and the, and the results of good.
Yep, you can, if you request that, well, Cleo can help you out with that. Jamie's out of town this week, but.
Alright.
Okay. Anyone else who's to address the board? Yeah.
Ten twenty-two Southwest Buckstall Drive. The reason why I'm here is because I am tired of being stopped by Southern Pacific Railroad on Main Street. I don't care. It's not a matter of, uh, them doing it occasionally. It's a matter of them doing it the same way every time. In the last four months, I've been stopped three times for that train, just as random times I went Main Street. The state of Missouri has a law that says, and I can't remember the exact time. It's either five minutes or fifteen minutes. A train is allowed, not allowed to block the intersection past that timing. It's state law. I've gone through this before when I lived in Kansas City with Missouri Pacific, down the Leeds area where I was born and raised. But, uh, it's a pattern. There's nothing happenstance about it. They don't have any breakdowns. It's not just an occasional thing. The train coming from the east, from the east going west, it will pull up, block the intersection. Of course, the gates come down, everybody get by on, on Main Street. And it'll sit there and eventually stop for several minutes. The other train from the west pulls up and it stops short of Main Street. Then it pulls on up and blocks with Main Street and they sit there for another several minutes. Then finally, the train going west moves out. And then finally, the train moving, uh, east moves out. Now, I was there on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. I was there at nine twenty-eight PM when I was stopped by the train. Kansas City Southern. The train finally cleared the tracks and the gates went up at ten oh two. It didn't sound like five minutes or fifteen minutes. And I, I'm thinking it's five minutes, I'm not sure. It's been such a long time ago since I went through this with Kansas City. But I came up here and talked to the, uh, police authorities and they were to call me back. Well, they were busy, they didn't get to call me back. But eventually, I came back up and I talked to, uh, Captain Hedger. And Captain Hedger said they've had a problem with this and he's frustrated too. Kansas City Southern does not want to do anything about it. Uh, if you don't know anything about this, we here, the, uh, railroads have been extremely arrogant over the past hundred and fifty years. They don't care. And I don't see a children in here, so I'm going to tell you what Southern Pacific and all these railroads think of the citizens of Green Valley. They just give you the middle finger. That's how much they care about us. Because they violate the law on a regular, constant basis. Now, when I lived in the Leeds area in Kansas City, I lived a block and a half from the railroad tracks. They're on, uh, Thirty Seventh Street, which is now State Avenue Drive. The Chevrolet plant was active, so they had trains switching in and out of the Chevrolet plant. I would sit there for a half hour, forty-five minutes, even close to an hour and a half, three blocks from home waiting for these trains to clear. Finally, I had enough of it. I put a clipboard in the car and the next time I was stopped, a block and a half from home. And they were sitting there for over twenty minutes. I just started going back and talking to the people in the cars behind me. I got the names, addresses and phone numbers of twenty-eight people. And I had the day off the next day, so I went down to City Hall in Kansas City. They gave me the runaround for a couple of hours. I finally talked to the head engineer down there, Mr. Satterfield. And he said they had the same problems in Missouri Pacific. He called in and they, oh, it must have been Frisco. No, it wasn't Frisco. I just grew up around what Frisco is, I don't know Missouri Pacific is. So anyway, uh, he, uh, told them that, uh, he had a petition here to be no more of that. Spends sporadic, but no more. They will not block that intersection. The state law says they must either move on after that period of time, or they must break the train and let traffic through. That's state law. So, he sent a letter to Missouri Pacific and he sent me a copy, but I was all over for it today and I can't find it. I didn't go away, maybe my wife misplaced her throw at him. But anyway, uh, Mr. Satterfield wrote in there to Missouri Pacific and said, Kansas City would not tolerate it anymore, any more complaints. The engineers will not be cited anymore. The engineers will be arrested by the police department and put in jail. And Missouri Pacific will be taken to court and cited under the laws of the state of Missouri. So what goes, as far as I know, this is still the state law. This was like forty-five years ago. I don't know what the situation is down on Main Street, why they have to stop, whether they got a siding down there that runs right through the middle of downtown Green Valley or what. I'm suspecting that's what it is. Well, I think what needs to be done is, uh, Southern Pacific needs to extend their, their tracks on down there. So one train can pass without both trains having to stop, blocking traffic and violating state law. Now, you'll never, ever hardly see me dressed up in a suit and tie. I do it for funerals, I do it for weddings, and I do it when I'm extremely serious about a situation. So I'm not going to a wedding or a funeral tonight, so you just guess the third option. So that's basically what I have to say. I would like the city council to do something about this because as long as it continues, some of the cities not going to do anything. Unless some pressure's brought to bear. So anyway, I thank you very much for listening to me.
Chief, have we had contact with him? I mean, I know at one point we had a good contact with him. Do we still have that or? Okay, just call us with them. Uh, anyone else who's to address the board? Seeing none, move on to the consistent agenda.
Yeah, I'm moving to accept the consistent agenda.
I have looked at my list to prove the consistent agenda, so I have a second.
Second.
Second on the clock. Any discussion? Seeing none, now fairly please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. Seeing no previous business or new business, we'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation from Stat Design Architects. Excuse me?
Uh, good evening. Uh, we do appreciate the opportunity for this, you again. One of the key milestones for this project. With me here tonight, uh, by the way, I'm Jim Self, working with Stat Design Architects. This is Mike Huley with Felix Architects. And we also have with us Chris Hess with McCallan Gordon. He's bringing up the rear, but he's a supporting here. Um, McCallan Gordon has been involved with the budgeting and process and may process constructability, um, since, uh, since you folks hired him earlier last year. So they've been a key part of this team as well. But, uh, we want to give you an update. This is a key milestone. Um, it is a preliminary design, uh, update and concluding our services, uh, to date with the city. Uh, pending the next milestone, which would be the, uh, bond election on April seventh. And trusting, of course, that, uh, that citizens agree and let you move forward with the project based on, uh, positive outcome from that. But, um, previous milestone, of course, was in December when, uh, when, uh, perhaps, uh, November, when we presented the master plan. And that, I have a copy of that booklet, I think the board is familiar with that and has seen that. Certainly available and it's also available on the, uh, the website, the envision Green Valley website. So that's a key milestone. Also, that's when you authorize us to go into preliminary design. By the way, I think was, was really, uh, smart that you allowed us to do that and directed us to do that. To do enough design to ensure that the buildings are right size, that they are designed to a point where the public can understand what it is that they will be voting on. And give you and the public some confidence that the project can go forward in that mode. We still have a lot of work to do, um, and there are several phases left of architectural engineering services. What you authorized us to do to date was twenty to twenty-five percent of schematic design. That's preliminary. Uh, the next phase would be the design development phase. And actually, if, if the, the bond passes and we go forward, we would finish schematic design to make sure that the, the designs receiving are correct. Do some fine tuning on those. Then we would enter into what's called design development phase, which is where we get into more detail. Uh, we bring in engineers to, uh, review the systems and make sure mechanical, lighting, uh, utilities, drainage, all of that stuff works. Then we would go into construction documents, which is where we write the specifications. We prepare the construction documents or drawings, details, all of that information pulled together so that you can then get firm bids from, uh, McCallan Gordon and a GMP for, which is a guaranteed maximum price to go forward with construction. So all that is still to do, uh, still to come, but this is still a pretty important milestone. And as part of the milestones, I wanted to bring up a couple of, uh, previous milestones and some background. Just a quick reminder that this process goes back at least to two thousand and fourteen, when your comprehensive plan was developed and approved by the board. Other key components of the background, um, were a public, is a public survey. That was, uh, conducted about a year and a half ago. Uh, from that information and from our involvement, uh, beginning a little over a year ago, the need was established. There were several, um, public engagement events. In fact, there were, uh, at least nine in the past twelve months, including steering committee meetings. Um, of course, every meeting, history has been a key part of this process. Site analysis, uh, which is preserved the key features of the site, understanding the site. Budgeting, which McCallan Gordon has assisted with. And now preliminary design, which we are now concluding until after the election. So just a reminder of how we got to this point, that it didn't happen overnight. You folks and city leaders and prior board members have put a lot of, uh, effort and investment into this process. Uh, and a quick reminder about the master plan, I mentioned that a while ago. That was approved in, uh, December by the board and that's been the basis for how we are moving forward with design on the site. That master plan showed you a, a drawing like this, which is phase one, showing the key locations of the major buildings, uh, including the library, which would be a partner in this endeavor. The library, of course, would be funded independently. Um, they, they have their own, um, funding mechanism, would pay for the library independent from city, uh, projects. See, the, the upper right is the rec center location, uh, and just below it is the city hall and police department location. Since then, that has been developed into more detail. It will change on me here. Here we go. This is the current site plan. It's a little warped. For some reason, that's stretching it a tad, but the buildings are essentially in the same location. You see another orange block in the upper left, um, towards the top of the library. Yes, he pointed that, Mike. Um, that is, yeah, above there is potential for a health clinic. And city is in conversations with, uh, a partner potentially for that. So that has been, excuse me, added to the site plan. But those are the key components, and this is phase one again. Phase two, as you recall, includes an outdoor aquatics, uh, facility, which would be behind the rec center. Um, additional trails, additional fields and park-like amenities which can be added at some point in the future. So with that, just a word about the site and how that's developing. This is a bird's eye view, if you will, from basically above where the library sits, looking north to the right. Let's see if we can get the mouse over here. Buckner Charzney Road would be running along over here. This would be the city hall structure. This would be the rec center. And it, it goes off the page a little bit to the left. So you see the roof structures and the shape. The city hall is much more linear, um, and longer. Uh, rec center, by nature of the, the facilities inside, gymnasiums and the indoor aquatics, is a little lower and broader. We'll show you more images of what that looks like. What you're seeing in the foreground is the park component, which is laid atop the footprint of the old house, which is there now. Which would include, uh, splash pads, includes, uh, some clay structures. And budget pending, you can probably see over here to the right, there's some steel structures that form the, an outline of a gable structure. Uh, we would like to do some more of that and, uh, budget and final design pending. There may be an opportunity to do some more silhouetting and steel of the original shape of the house. Original shape and components of the house has been a little bit difficult to determine. Even with your local historian's help and some old photographs to determine what was the original house and at what point do you pay homage to whatever it is that's original. At somewhat, uh, at some point in time, you have to determine what that is. But I think most folks probably remember, remember the house mostly as it is, even though it was added on to in several, uh, different, uh, areas. But, uh, the intent, and as this indicates, uh, the intent is to celebrate and, uh, pay homage to the history of the site and that house. So that would be a key part of the design. And here's a view, um, down on the ground from almost the same position, looking north. In the center, you see, uh, a renovation or restoration of the, uh, the water, uh, tank, uh, system, really. It's filled from spring, uh, by pumps and then served the house and the grounds through, um, elevated water tank. Uh, so that's a key feature, a key part of the history. And, uh, you see the other features, the water feature or splash pad, which is here in front of that. Clay structures, so this will be a park-like setting. In the background, you see the rec center. That would be large roof over the, the gymnasium portion of the rec center. The entrance is just behind it. We'll go to a closer image of that in just a second. First, I want to give you a real brief overview of the floor plans, or actually, I'm not going to let you do that, I'm getting a little gravel. I assure you, it's just suggestions, weather change, that's all.
We're going to run through the floor plans in both the rec center and the police department, uh, police department, city hall. With the, the master plan, we've got an understanding of what all the spatial needs are within the plans. Through schematic design, we're able to take those relationships and really test them out. So these two floor plans represent the program that was in the master plan and an idea of what the space, spatial layout will be. Keep in mind that this is the upper level. This is a walk-in level from that entrance. This is the lower level. And the site, as you might recall, uh, steps down from a high platform down to a lower level. So think about the building as a walkout. Walk in on this level, walk out on the lower level down below. From the entry, there's a fireplace to your right. Uh, there's circulation space that goes to, uh, uh, group exercise this way, community room this way. You walk across the bridge here to the fitness area. And the fitness area overlooks the pool, the leisure pool, as well as it overlooks the gymnasium. Around this area is a, is a track. I can't recall how many laps that is. It was a ten, ten per mile.
Ten per mile.
Ten per mile. And then when you go down to the lower level, you go from that lobby, down these stairs, and then you end up in some circulation space on this level. It connects both the gymnasium with the leisure pool, the locker rooms are behind it, and lots of support space. With the leisure pool, you can see that we've got an activity slide, uh, that wraps around the outside of the building, comes back inside. And just leisure activity here, there's a couple lap lanes here. But it also has the ability, if you're able to negotiate with the school district, a cold water pool, where, uh, the swim team can actually practice for competitions and it could be open to the public as well. So that would be four more additional lap lanes. So that's the, that's what the rec center looks like. I'm going to show you some exterior images in a moment, uh, of this facade right here, showing the entry. I'm going to show you the, the other floor plan first, we'll get back to that. So this is the city hall and the police department. Very similar to the rec center, this is a walkout building as well. This is the upper level. This is the lower level. From the lower level, all of the, the police parking is on this, is in back of the building on this lower level, as is staff for city hall. So any parking that is in front of the building is going to be visitors, people coming to meet people at the city, at the police department. Um, the organization of this block is, is more linear like Jim mentioned. That linear layout allows us to get daylight on both sides of the building. It's not square, so we can get daylight into many of these spaces. Think about it, also, you're going to see this in three D, but this is the block, this green area. It represents a block that is city hall. And you might think of this other block as the justice center with police as well as courts and the, the city chambers. And then there's a connecting element that's circulation space. This mouse is a little tough to, to use, but this is all one story, this little connector. Uh, police department has public facing pieces up here with the, with the captain, as well as the police chief, uh, training room, uh, an entrance to the police department at that location and an entrance from the exterior, which you'll see in the rendering from this location. Uh, the city courts and the chambers are here, the entrances of this location. The dais that you guys are all seated at is here. Uh, easy access to conference rooms in the back, as well as a conference room off of the lobby or back to city hall offices. Most, all of the city hall is on one level. And you will go downstairs to a, a lower level, three stairs through an elevator that has a break room at the lower level, as well as some storage. So city employees, again, enter this level, come upstairs, occupy offices here. Most of the police department's operations are at the lower level with the Sally Port detention, uh, detective sergeants, et cetera. So that's the general layout of the floor plan for, uh, for the city hall and police. I'm going to show you two exterior, exterior views. One is of this area and another one is from this location. First, we'll start out with, I believe, the rec center. So going back to the rec center, Jim had showed you that image through the park. Here's a view standing on the edge of the park, looking back towards it. The park is really a focal point for all of these buildings. Uh, the library faces onto it. The entrance to the rec center has a path that faces to it. And that, you'll find that the, the city hall does the same thing, a path that leads to the park. Exterior materials, materials are brick, glass, some metal panel, uh, a grand entrance, so it's clearly identified where the entrance is. And then, but we toss some clear story glass in the back, uh, if, if it fits within the budget, that's still being evaluated. But that adds some light back into the middle of the building because the rec center is so deep. It's a big, big volume. I'm going to switch to a, a view of the city hall. Whoops, I'm going to switch to a view of the park. So this is on the north side of the rec center, as well as the city hall police. There's a path that goes all the way around the site. We'll go back and look at that in a moment. But this gives you a sense of what that might feel like for the public to come to this campus, be able to walk around the paths. And these paths in time will connect to other paths through the city. You can see the rec center, just a glimpse of it in the back, the red, uh, slide that's on the backside of it. So this is just a view of what that looks like from the park on the north side of the building. Yes. At some point in the future, future outdoor pool will be on this side. And then this is a view of, uh, city hall to the right, to the left, I'm sorry. And then the justice portion with the police department, courts, chambers on the right-hand side. Uh, the shape of these two volumes is really trying to hearken back to the agricultural, agrarian look of the old barns that used to be on the site. It's sort of a historical reference. Even those old, old barns had what we call dormers that let light into the space. In both cases, we're using those dormers on each building. And then we also have some tall dormers that represent other significant spaces within. All of that is connected with a, a glassy entrance, a one-story entrance that connects those two buildings. And then the center has really popped up to identify entry to this component of the building. In each case, all of these buildings, both buildings, we're thinking about materiality, something that's long-lasting, finishes and durability that you're not going to have to maintain over time. These are, uh, a sandwiched metal composite panel. We've looked at a couple of different materials. Could be a, a metal composite panel, could be a, what we call a cement panel. The ends of the buildings will also introduce brick, like the rec center. Each end of these big volumes is brick. And then lots of glass to get transparency and daylight into the building. And then you'll also see some screen elements that may be wood to help filter that light that, that goes into the lobby.
And then brings us back to the site plan again, just to refresh the location of those. You see the city hall towards the bottom of this image. There we go. Mouse is kind of delayed. City hall, rec center, library, future clinic. Um, so just to bring all that home, and you notice the trails around the site. Um, our current estimate and budget does carry probably three quarters of the trails you see here. Not all of these are absolutely necessary, but we would like to get as much trail in as possible. You know, there's other potential, other potential sources for funding for trails and connectivity to existing and future trails that the parks department is planning. So that's a key part of this process and project as well. So from there, um, time and money, which is kind of bringing up the rear, but which is, uh, probably the most, two of the most important aspects of the project, time and money. Uh, just a brief word about the schedule. I mentioned earlier, um, pending approval on April seventh by the voters. We would then go into the completion of the design process and preparation of the, the bid documents and so forth, which would be about a year from now, give or take a couple of months. Uh, a bid process and then construction would start about a year from now, given, uh, plus or minus a couple of months. Move in could occur about fourteen to sixteen months, um, after that. There's also opportunity for, uh, during this design process to, um, to fast track part of the project. Like some of the utility work, grading and drainage work could be done initially to speed up that total construction process. And that's, of course, expertise of McCallan Gordon. And that's, of course, expertise of McCallan Gordon to, uh, to advise and to establish what those schedules might be. But, uh, ultimately then a move in, uh, late spring or summer of '22. So that's where we are with time. Then a brief word about, uh, budget. Uh, this is a breakdown of the various components, but the total is forty million. That's the max budget. That's what we're designing to. Um, everything we've shown you here today, uh, other than the items I mentioned, are within that budget to a pretty good level of comfort. And then bringing us back around to the initial view of the park. Um, at that point, uh, we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
You have any questions?
I got a question. Do we, this will be?
Well, the jail, is that going to be big enough?
I'm sorry, jail?
Uh-huh.
Yes, as far as, it's bigger than what you have now. In fact, the police department, uh, now occupies about half of this city, city hall the other half. Um, each of those areas would be pretty close to doubling in size in terms of support space, officer operations, uh, detention, jail, whatever you want to call it. And likewise, the city hall. So yes, should be adequate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll look forward to the next, uh, microphone in the next.
Uh, next up is the public hearing. The public hearing for loss at Old Town Marketplace.
Uh, Mr. Trozen is going to give a staff report on that. And show you some pictures when we, uh, get everything going.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chairman of the Board. Uh, the public hearing before you is for the loss at Old Town Marketplace. Uh, Old Town Marketplace LLC is requesting a change of zoning on approximately 122 acres from the downtown transition zone to R3P multifamily residential district. That would basically be, um, like this area right here is highlighted. And then the remaining part of this track here is a change in zoning from, um, C1 central business district to R3P multifamily residential district. The proposed loss at Old Town will consist of 154 rental units.
This basically shows you a, a site plan of the layouts. Um, we have, um, the development includes already the demolition of the former Patricia's, um, grocery store and hardware store. Uh, the new building would be in this general location right here. It will consist of a new four-story building, um, where the first floor will be mixed-use amenity level and sixty-four rental units. Then there will be three, A, B, uh, C, D, B, C and D, um, buildings, which will be, uh, three-story apartment buildings. All three of these buildings will contain ninety units on this vacant track that's currently. The proposed 154 rental units will consist of 10% of one-bedroom units, 80% of two-bedroom units and 10% of three-bedroom units. The mixed-use amenity center, which will be on the first floor of building A, will consist of an indoor pool, pickleball courts, exercise room, media theater room, tenant co-op workshop and Wi-Fi cafe, leasing office and tenant storage units. In addition to the rezoning the property to R3 multifamily residential district, the applicant is also requesting the development be designated as a planned overlay district. According to the city ordinances, a planned overlay district shall provide latitude and flexibility in location of buildings, structures, open spaces, play areas, parking, roads, variations and setback and yard requirements. The amount of open space, the buffer zone, yard parking, play area, density, floor area ratio and height requirements shall be determined by the Board of Alderman after recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Buildings over the maximum allowable height of the base zoning district can be allowed. The net area of land to be included in a District P designation shall be at least two and one-half acres in size. The proposed P designation with this development is 3.1 acres. The location of any District P shall be on property which also has direct access to major thoroughfares. As you can see from the city's comprehensive plan, Eagles Parkway is a major arterial. The existing and proposed parking areas have direct access onto Eagles Parkway. In addition, this development has access to Garden Street and Rock Creek Lane, which then intersects with another major arterial road, that being Buckner Tarzney Road. In District R3, buildings or structures cannot exceed 45 feet and cannot exceed three stories in height. Buildings B, C and D, the three buildings right in this general location, they comply and their overall height is 42.5 feet. Building A will be approximately 65 feet in height. But again, with the District P designation, this, uh, flexibility as far as the height requirement is allowed. Every dwelling of rental unit shall have a minimum floor area. The city zoning regulations requires 500 square feet per unit for buildings exceeding two units. Proposed one-bedroom units will have a minimum of 784 square feet. The two-bedroom units will have a minimum of 1,079 square feet. And the three-bedroom units will have a minimum of 1,316 square feet. The, uh, the floor area ratio should not be greater than four tenths. According to the, uh, proposed zoning ordinance, the proposed development being rezoned to R3P will have a floor area, floor area ratio of .39. The applicant also supplied, and I'll come back to the elevation drawings here in a moment, but they provided a, uh, parking stall analysis. The city zoning regulations require two parking spaces for one- or two-bedroom units and three parking spaces for three or more bedrooms. Using the Old Town Marketplace parking area and the proposed rental units and existing commercial spaces, the required number of parking spaces would be 537. The total that will be provided post-development will be 541 spaces. The new building's exterior, although not colored, this kind of gives you an idea as far as, uh, what is, uh, existing, what would be the proposed building A elevation. And then this would be the elevation for those three other buildings looking, um, at the various north, south, east and west. So the exterior materials will consist of brick, stucco, composite siding panel and trim. The applicant has stated that the design of the buildings will reflect and complement the facade of the existing buildings, as well as to bring continuity and cohesiveness to the entire site. So in reviewing the preferred land use plan within the 2014 comprehensive plan, plan illustrates this area to be mixed between commercial and multifamily. Proposed rezoning and preliminary development plan would be consistent with the character and intent of the long-range plan for the city. Public notice was given in the examiner for the public hearing tonight, as well as a letter to property owners of record uh, within 185 feet of the proposed development and change of zoning to R-3P. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on February 12th. The commission unanimously voted to recommend approval. Uh, staff recommends approval of the change of zoning to R-3P um, and approval of the preliminary development plan for the loss at Old Town. If the rezoning and preliminary development plan is approved, the applicant will need to submit a final development plan for the Planning and Zoning Commission review and recommendation to the Board of Alderman. The information on the final development plan is more detailed regarding the site plan and proposed infrastructure. In addition to the sub, the submitted requirements in the city zoning regulations, staff requires the following. One, show existing handicap parking and ensure each building has accessible parking near the main entrance. Two, show proposed drainage facilities for new improvement. Three, sewer services are shown under proposed buildings, provide proposed sewer layout and capacity analysis. Provide proposed water main layout and capacity analysis. And five, recommend that a limited traffic impact analysis be provided to compare original traffic impact with proposed traffic impact. That concludes the, uh, staff report.
Okay.
Uh, I'm going to report from the local standpoint. Do you want to? Hi, I'm Brian Ron, uh, 1,000 Northwest High Point Lee Summit with, uh, Old Town Marketplace LLC and Ward Development. And, uh, here to answer any questions that you might have. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. Um, what is your price point for you?
Uh, we're going to have a mix of one, two and three-bedroom units and, uh, you know, we've, we've looked at the marketplace and, you know, some of the other projects that are in the area and we're going to be running right around 900 to 1,200.
So 900 for a single?
Yeah.
And 1,200 for a three-bedroom?
Correct. Now, those numbers are not set. We're still in, you know, some of the, we're still designing, we're still working through it. You know, the, you know, the amenity center will have a large amount of amenities that aren't available with some of the other projects, stuff like that, that, you know, may push that up a little bit.
Um, have you done a, um, like a market study for this area that shows that, you know, 154 units can be ran from this area or?
Yeah, we, we have done some research on the area and looked at, uh, what the, you know, current vacancy is of, you know, projects in the area and there's very little. Uh, of course, we have a lot of experience with, you know, some of the multifamily in the area and, you know, vacancy, we don't have a lot, they don't have, uh, a lot with other similar projects in the area. Um, you know, so that's been our primary, you know, looking at, uh, where that, you know, where that need's going to be. And we feel that, you know, it's, it's here with this type of a problem.
How many people do we estimate that we'll have there?
Well, it's, uh, 154 units spread out between, you know, those, uh, different types. But the bulk of them are going to be two-bedroom units and, you know, we're, we're not exactly sure. And we got into this conversation a little bit, you know, with, uh, you know, trying to figure out, you know, exactly where, you know, we're going to get those unit counts and stuff like that. Is this going to be primarily families? Is this going to be, you know, younger couples, things like that? Um, we don't have a set, you know, figure, but you're, you're likely talking in the 300, you know, plus range.
How many more police and fire department do we need? What's going to cost for us to get more fire department? I'm sure we're going to need another police officer or two. Anybody?
Come on, just for this project going in?
No, when they get it in and moved in.
No, I mean, as far as the fireside deal, CJC is going to review everything. But I would imagine with an apartment building, it's all sprinkled, um, to start with. So, I mean, it'd be the same thing as like Bristol Park or any of those other ones. It's, uh...
Well, I think you mean with influx of people, are we going to need to add more staff?
Yeah, I mean, it's no...
Leaks wise because of influx of people, is that right?
Yeah. I mean, if you're looking at 300 or something like that, so the typical number per house is 2.8 if you just average things. So, I mean, if you add 100 houses, we don't really think twice about that. And that's on average would be like 280 people. So I don't, just doing this is not going to be like the need...
Similar problems.
Hmm? Do I?
It's similar, I mean, with asset property.
Well, we're all right.
It will be called the office, calls anywhere, so...
What's that?
What about the utilities? The water, the sewer, are we prepared to have this in place soon?
Yeah, and that's one of the things that Mr. Trozen pointed out that they needed to do, uh, between now and the final development plan was go through and they'll have their fixture counts and all that and get the, the load that's going to come or the need for water and sewer. And it's making sure that those facilities are, um, or that amount is there. So before anything was approved at the final version, they'd have done all that.
So after the traffic analysis was completed, if it shows that something does need to be done with the roadway, does the cost of that fall solely on the city or would it be shared with the developer? Would it be completely on the developer?
Completely on the developer.
And are you in the parking lot and you're going to have, are you, are you going to redo the whole parking lot through the whole loss or, you know, people are high class, you know, where their liquor store is now ways? Is, I mean, is the whole parking lot going to be done or just where you're building?
Uh, I, I'm actually not sure on the other side. I, I believe we're going to have to resurface the, the bulk of what we have over there. Um, you know, because we're, we're using parking in front, using parking with the, you know, new parking that's going to go in with these. We also have the multifamily that's behind, that's going to be incorporated together with this and that parking. So, yeah, we're going to have to redo quite a bit of it. Whether or not we're going to get all the way over to, um, the far side, I'm not sure. You know, that... Yeah, I mean, there's definitely going to be a lot of, we're, we're looking at the entire, you know, complex, uh, to be, you know, updated. There's a, you know, it, it's a rather large and, you know, quite expensive project. We want the whole thing to be updated.
It's, your guys' intention is, I mean, you're going to be managing it or you're going to be building it and selling it off to somebody else? I mean, what's the...
Uh, you know, I don't know on the, the long-term side of things. Uh, we do work with various management companies, for example, on our other projects. Um, you know, Worcester is one, for example, that we work with, Blue Springs and also here in Grayan Valley already. Um, you know, they've had an input, uh, ultimately, you know, a company like that will likely be involved who, you know...
I guess my, I just want to make sure we've had issues elsewhere with like things being sold to owners like out of California and then we have a heck of a time, you know, getting anything done. So I just make sure that there's an intention to keep the ownership of it.
Uh, it, it is right now. I can't speak for the wards, you know, for, you know, down the road. Uh, but there definitely will be a... There's a good chance that a, you know, a management company is going to be involved. Um, you know, it's just, that, that's what needs to happen for a project this big. Now, like I said, the one that we've worked with quite a bit already, including here in Grayan Valley, you know, they're based out of Canton City.
Now, Mr. Trozen might touch on this, but is it, is there any plan to put anything other than residential on here?
Uh, well, the, um, we, we have, the, the first floor is going to be an amenity center with, you know, amenities for the residential portion. But then this is actually still attached to, you know, the Old Town Marketplace. And we're looking at, you know, yes, we are talking to restaurants. Um, we actually have a, you know, another parcel there that we're talking with another restaurant on. So, um, you know, we're looking at basically filling that entire, you know, uh, property there. The library's there, of course, which, you know, looking at long-term, that's, that's something that, uh, is probably going to move. And, you know, we're going to take, we're taking all that space and kind of want to get tenants in there that are appropriate for, you know, a residential mixed-use development rather than a strip mall.
Do we have any other questions?
Uh, this is a public hearing. I'll put it up for, uh, comments, uh, for or against.
Just come forward to the microphone and give your name and address on the record.
Chad Rosson here, 58 T Street, Lee Summitt, Missouri. Um, owner of Eagle Convenience Storage across the street. Um, I was curious, uh, are you planning on building it in phases or all at once?
Yeah, we are planning on phases. The three buildings to the west there are intended to be, you know, that was, that's where we're going to... where we're gonna be starting and we'll be building those three. We're, we're not looking at long-term, you know, building the four-story building, you know, that goes with it. Uh, there's not a big gap on what I mean in there. As most of you know, we've already started, you know, major work on that, getting it ready. So the three buildings, uh, are gonna be where we start and, you know, following immediately with the, the four-story building.
Do you have a project to start?
Uh, we are expecting to start late spring, you know, we're, we're in the process, you know, providing everything to the way we'd like. You know, we do want to get this project started this spring.
And the four-story room, is that, which one is the amenity building?
Uh, the amenity building is the four-story building, that's where the market was. Um, so that's all, entire first floor with the exception of, you know, one small section on the west side of it is all amenities, um, you know, for, for those tenants and, for the community as well. I mean, we have a lot of things going in there.
Anyone else?
Just one quick question instead.
Yeah, don't use that, yeah.
Um, so the, the three new buildings are gonna be behind the, what used to be the pharmacy and stuff?
Correct, yeah, they, um, those, those are still going to be there out front, they're not being taken, taken out or anything like that. Um, it's that empty parcel, you know, between the grocery store and then the school district.
Anyone else have any comments through public hearings? All right, see, now we'll close the public hearing.
Next time, the ordinances.
Mayor, I move with my second reading, I've had only for Bill B twenty dash zero five.
I have motion Alvin Haley to bring, uh, up for, how is this? Three efforts, uh, disagree by title only, uh, Bill B twenty dash zero five, I have a second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, if you remember, this is the, uh, area directly across from, uh, Price Chopper and Papa John's, um, that area there in between the Outer Road and Woodbury Drive.
See none, all fair, please say aye. All say the same sign.
Mayor, this is, mayor, this is the second reading of Bill number B twenty dash zero five, an ordinance approving the final plat of Mercado Plaza.
Mayor, I move we accept the second reading of Bill B twenty dash zero five, making it ordinance number twenty-four ninety-five.
I have the motion Alvin Haley to approve Bill B twenty dash zero five for a second reading, make it an ordinance twenty-four ninety-five, drive a second.
Any discussion?
Right, this will be...
Roll call vote. Alvin Stratton?
Yes.
Alvin Totten?
Yes.
Alvin Bous?
Yes.
Alvin West?
Yes.
Ordinance is approved, six, zero, mayor.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only for Bill B twenty dash zero six.
I have motion Alvin Haley to make the first reading of Bill B twenty dash zero six, drive a second.
All right. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is what we just had the public hearing on, if you had any further questions, Mr. Trozen would be happy to answer those. Do we have any questions or discussion?
All right. See none, all fair, please say aye. All say the same sign.
Mayor, this is the first reading of Bill number B twenty dash zero six, an ordinance changing the zoning on approximately one point two acres from downtown transition zone to R three P multifamily residential district planned overlay district and approximately one point nine acres from C one central business district to R three P multifamily residential district planned overlay district and the approval of preliminary development plan for the lofts at Old Town Marketplace.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading for Bill B twenty dash zero six and bring it back for a second reading by title only.
I have motion Alvin Haley to approve Bill E twenty dash zero six for its first reading and you're back by title for a second reading.
Drive a second.
Alvin Stratton. Any discussion? See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign.
Six, oh, we'll see you at that at the next meeting, mayor.
Okay, the next up would be, uh, resolutions.
Mayor, I move we accept resolution twenty dash twenty-one, it's ready.
I have motion Alvin Haley to approve resolution R twenty dash twenty-one, drive a second.
Uh, mayor, members of the board, uh, Mr. Trozen's gonna give a brief overview of that.
Thank you. Substance of this agreement is to improve our service as far as internet cable and support services, not only to City Hall, but also the, uh, community center, public works facility, as well as the parks facility that's down at the, uh, Future Campus, um, property. And, um, right now, um, we presently have services with Comcast, but we utilize, uh, BaaS communications for maintenance of our phone system at a cost of two fifty. We would no longer need to utilize the, uh, BaaS communication in this process. Uh, Comcast would then provide that, uh, maintenance facility and what would it basically do is we would have, uh, new and improved phones at all the facilities that I mentioned, um, we would have fiber coming in at City Hall, uh, which would also expand the backup for Regis and the police department. It will definitely improve the phone and internet service for our public works facility, uh, as well as, I mentioned earlier, provide the support services. So if, uh, uh, the successful in the vote, uh, for the community campus, this system is designed then that we could basically pick it up and move it as far as the phone system and other components of it to a new location.
Do we have any questions or comments then?
Basically, the, the phone system then is all cloud-based, you don't have any maintenance in-house that you have to worry about and Comcast deals with it all, so I read that correct.
You are correct.
Anything else?
All right, see none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution R twenty dash twenty-two.
I have motion Alvin Haley to approve resolution R twenty dash twenty-two, drive a second.
Second.
Alvin West?
Any discussion?
Uh, mayor, members of the board, uh, this is something that kind of occurs on a yearly basis, but Chief Beal can give you an overview of what all is included in this.
Mayor, board, this is a yearly grant that we get from ODOT. It's one hundred percent funded with no match from the city. Uh, it's an HMV grant, which is our hazardous moving grant, which is generally, uh, worked, uh, Monday through Wednesday or on Saturdays during the afternoons or early evening hours and we target the high enforcement areas. It, it, it allows officers to come in, work overtime and get extra enforcement hours in. And the DWI grant, again, we generally, uh, try to work them Friday and Saturday night or Saturday and Sunday night, uh, from the hours of ten PM to four AM, again, targeting the hot, target areas such as double A, forty highway, BB, uh, just to remove, uh, impaired drivers from the roadway.
Do we have any questions or discussion?
See none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All say the same sign. For resolutions, next up is city attorney's report.
No, we...
Next up is city administrator and staff report.
Uh, we'll start with Ms. Ozenbaugh.
Just one final reminder, we have the last community campus meeting before the election on Thursday, it's the twelfth. Um, we'll start at six o'clock and plan on going till eight o'clock at Stony Point Elementary, uh, this time around.
Uh, Mr. Craig.
So, I had, uh, two things this evening. Um, today, uh, Mr. Murphy thanked me for my recent gesture to purchase ice cream for several employees at City Hall. Um, this afternoon, he said that he wanted to continue that trend by purchasing lunch for everyone at City Hall. Um, I did tell him that several people might ask him, 'cause they asked me about the ice cream today, when, uh, he would purchase the lunch, so he said he would start, um, this Friday, we're having the quarterly finance and water department lunch, so, um, thank you, um, Ken, for offering to buy lunch for us there. I believe we have discussed, uh, Fifty-Four Street Grill or...
Oh, that was it?
Johnny's, yes, yeah. Um, you'll probably need to get with the rest of the departments to determine when you need to purchase lunch for them.
That's been noted.
Yes. Um, the only other item that I had was we are preparing for the annual city audit that is scheduled for the latter part of this month and beginning of April, so that is all that I have for my report tonight.
I've got Mr. Davey.
Um, mayor and board, as you all recall, towards the end of last year, we completed the Blue Branch Creek Trail, the phase one. It's a trail, it's a little bit over one mile in length. Um, we've done some additional improvements, uh, to that here in the off-season with some signage and gates and so forth, but we'd like to have an official kind of grand opening, uh, ribbon cutting. We do have that scheduled for Tuesday, uh, March twenty-fourth at two PM. Uh, we plan to meet at the, uh, Cross Creek, uh, trailhead, which is, uh, within the, the Cross Creek neighborhood. If you take Cross Creek Drive-In where that dead end is at is where one of our trailheads, uh, is located. Um, I'll report on this again at our, our next Board of Alderman meeting, as that will be the day before, uh, the ribbon cutting, but, um, hope everyone can attend.
And Chief Beal.
Mayor, board, in two thousand nineteen, you, you all approved purchase of a smoke range simulator. Uh, what that is, is a software that allow us to train as if we was out on a range, a firing range, shooting. Uh, Friday, I was able to get it up and running and we had employees of the city come down and, uh, have fun on this, on this software. It's a training or scenario-based, uh, software that allow us to determine whether use of force is needed or, or not needed, and I think it's a good tool to engage the community. Uh, so they get a general idea of, of what police officers deal with and the performance of their duties. Uh, I think it was pretty successful. We had the news media come out, uh, Channel forty-one, Fox Four and Channel Five came out and, and took some footage of it. Um, and this Saturday, um, we're doing the same thing, but we're opening it up to the general public. Again, to give the general public an idea, I, I know it's not real, uh, when they shoot, these people gonna get back up, we're gonna restart the video, but what I observed, uh, while I was down there is that their adrenaline is flowing, they're really thinking about the decisions that they have to make, um, and I just think it's, it's a eye-opening experience for them to go through and, and at least get a general idea of what we feel, uh, when we're performing our duties. So, uh, we had sixteen slots, uh, set for Saturday, uh, fourteen of them slots are filled at this point. Uh, board members, I know you guys didn't come out or had the opportunity, but if you guys wanna come in on Saturday, we'll make time for you guys to go down there and, and, uh, see what you guys think.
Was it gonna be chief? As far as it gonna be?
Uh, just, just show up here at City Hall, Sergeant Wise will be here and, and, and actually what he's gonna do is Sergeant Wise is gonna go over our use of force policy, uh, our continuing use, uh, force continuum, um, because that, that gun is not the only use of force or, or weapon that we have, so he'll go over our use of force continuum and, um, when we use force or deadly force. Uh, and then we'll have a few questions for him that I, I'd like to post on Facebook to, to, uh, show, show the community, uh, what their experience was. So that's Saturday, uh, the fourteenth, nine to one, uh, we got two spots open and if, if more come, then we'll make space for you. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Trozen had his written report and then he, uh, wanted to follow up on an item from the last board meeting.
So there were a couple of requests for additional information. The first one that came up was, uh, Alderman Headley in regards to the fence, uh, requirements and the ordinance pertaining to setback in fences and definitions. Um, before you, I prepared a chart that basically compares our ordinance to, uh, four other communities surrounding us. Um, we also met with the fence contractors last Thursday and we sat down and went over this chart as well as I got input from them as far as what they've experienced in other communities. So we're, uh, drafting up changes to the ordinance based on their feedback, based on what we found in other ordinances in regards to the setback on a corner lot. And more likely what we'll be recommending to the plan commission and then ultimately to you would be then an eight-foot setback from the property line or street right away on a side, uh, or corner lot where you have a fence that would be taller than, uh, four feet in height than a privacy fence. Um, there'll also be other, um, clarifications, you know, in meeting with the fence contractors in regards to the definition section, um, also in regards to the site distance triangle. Um, this is basically used to make sure that they, you cannot construct any kind of a, uh, landscaping fence, building or anything within this triangle that would provide any obstruction to someone who may be sitting at a stop sign, looking in one direction or another direction and the obstruction of this structure in the corner would impede their vision of traffic coming in either way. So we're gonna, uh, um, simplify that definition in this process as well. Um, we also talked a little bit about the materials that, that we allow and, um, we're gonna expand the materials to other types of fencing that they've experienced as far as what their customers and residents of, of Grain Valley have been asking for. Um, we also are working on in regards to, you know, the fences, as far as the construction of the fences, the finished surface facing outward from the property. This is very commonly found in a lot of communities, one that they, uh, were agreeable to and thought it was a good idea as well. Um, so we're, again, working on drafting those, uh, requirements. Um, the next step, as we talked about in this process, is that we would, uh, take these recommendations for the changes in the ordinances to the plan commission. Uh, they would hold a public hearing and then they would make a recommendation and then a second public hearing before the Board of Alderman. So if you'd like for us to proceed in that matter, we're prepared to do so.
You said go into the planning commission or?
That would be the first step.
Planning and zoning.
Yes, yes, planning and zoning commission.
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd like you to proceed, but I mean, everyone has to, has their input.
Uh, the, uh, the second item, I think, that was brought up was in regards to, we had a discussion on the water main break that we had down at Eagles Parkway and on Main Street and there was discussion and I think, uh, instructions as far as, um...
Putting together the information.
...associated with the cost to repair that and there's a chart in front of you that kinda, uh, spells out the costs associated, not only internally with our public works maintenance, but also the contractors that we had to hire in order to finish up that break. Uh, we have since provided the documentation to, um, the city attorney and his office in regards to the plans, in regards to this chart, um, who the contact is with the contractor who is responsible for that project, um, so to begin that process, I think, in regards to, um, filing a demand letter to that contractor.
We're gonna try file one in between?
Well, with a, you don't really file anything per se.
Just we'll mail them on and see.
Right. And, uh, Nathan Nicholas in our office is gonna be to care of that.
So in regards to this chart, just a little update that I found out this afternoon, as far as replacing the curb gutter sidewalk in the ADA branch, weather permitting, that contractor should be here tomorrow to, uh, do that work, so we're hoping everything gets wrapped up, um, you know, this week in regards to that.
Uh, the only other thing I just wanted to remind you guys that, uh, Ms. Logan is at the Missouri City Clerks Conference through Thursday, so if there's anything that you need, um, myself, Teresa or Kalila as the deputy can help you out with that. Uh, that is all we have. Uh, that is all we have.
Right. Next up, Board of Aldermen reports a comment.
Alvin Stratton? Alvin Totten?
Nothing to report.
Alvin Bass?
Hey, Alvin Headley? Nothing to report, but when you get that draft ordinance, can you share that with me?
Sure, of course.
I can chat with, uh, Mika, and at least let her know what's going on, the progress being made, and if there's still more steps. Appreciate it, thank you.
Alvin West?
Just like to comment about the, the previous reports, you did an excellent job. This is wonderful, very helpful, thank you.
Alvin Beaver?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Next is Mayor's report.
Can I ask you a question? Sorry.
That's your time.
Whenever you do talk with the railroad, um, if I could be included in the follow-up with that, uh, Mr. Miller is in my ward, and I just would kinda like to be, um, in the know on what the response is from them.
Yeah, what I plan, yeah, I do, usually.
Mm-hmm.
And so what I plan to do tomorrow, uh, is do, uh, uh-
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Uh, next is Mayor's report. Uh, I'm gonna pass this down, if you wanna pass it back up, you can let me know, uh.
We will, the city will be, uh-
Sponsoring a brick at Legacy Plaza. So those are the design options that Mr. Spicer gave me, that we can have the brick engraved, so we get everyone's kind of opinion on those, and we'll choose one to put out there. The Legacy Plaza outside by Trail, will they have the- So just, you know, pass it around and, uh, let me know, and I'll get back with it.
Let them know which option. Uh, that is all I have. I believe we have a need for executive session for items.
One, three, and thirteen.
One, three, and thirteen. So we entertain a motion to adjourn it to executive session then? Got motion from Alderman Headley, that's-
Second, second on Stratton. Any discussion?
All right.
Roll call, Alvin Stratton?
Yes.
Alvin Totten?
Yes.
Alvin Bass?
Alvin Headley?
Yes.
Alvin West?
Yes.
Alvin Beaver?
Yes.
All right, we'll adjourn to executive session.